Welcome to the regular town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, March 25th, 2024. Meeting is now called to order. We have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Augerton.
Here.
Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkema.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Royer.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. This point, we'll have the pledge allegiance. And today we have with us Krista Walker, who is with Maricopa County, the public health liaison. I understand she's handling our account. So she has agreed to lead us in the pledge. Thank you, Krista. In the area of public announcements, the rodeo this last weekend and most of the week, I thought was a great success. I want to congratulate Mike Poppinweimer, the president, and the hard, very hardworking board of directors. And they've had, they have hundreds of volunteers out there. So it was quite a success. I met one who flies here from Germany to be a volunteer and to attend the rodeo. That's just amazing. Also, our own Ernie Bunch, who is on Zoom this evening, he would normally be sitting between Catherine and Dusty. He's not here, but he's on Zoom. And I want to congratulate him on his hard work. And historically, Ernie has, in my view, 10 years ago, saved the rodeo during some dark times, along with some other hardworking people. And I'd like to congratulate all of them on just a great effort. We had some other big news this past week, and that is that HB 2570 was vetoed by the governor after passing both legislative houses. The last word I had was that all of our representative voted against it, but in spite of that, it passed out of the House and Senate, went to Governor Hobbs, who vetoed the bill. That bill would have been a disaster for Maricopa County, in my view, an utter failure of leadership. It would allow multi-story houses in residential areas, five stories per acre, kill all the zoning in towns over 70,000, which is right on our border, by the way. So we would not be unscathed by that. And how long would it take before they found us up here and noticed that we weren't lined up behind the dense housing bandwagon? Some other things, can't read my notes here. Well, it just would have led us into an urban lifestyle, and we had lost complete control over zoning. All the permitting was by right. We wouldn't need a planning department. Developers could build anything, essentially anywhere they wanted. You couldn't have more than a five-foot setback on the side or a 10-foot setback front and back. Some of our areas have 50 feet setbacks right now. So it would have basically, I guess I shouldn't use the inflammatory language I use in private, but it would have been a bad bill. At this point, we'll have call to the public.
Bruce Arlen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As many of you probably know, but I want to make sure that people in the audience and people viewing from home know, I have an announcement that Cave Creek Dark Sky has worked very hard over many months. And we, like the strategic plan, has requested to review ordinances in Cave Creek. Several, I think it might have been three or five a year, is as written, I'm not sure. We went, went ahead and worked with Dark Sky International very, very hard, a lot of work. And we revised the town ordinances for Chapter Two and Three, which contain the residential and the non-residential lighting. And it's quite amazing because it wasn't that much work. You know, everybody knew that we had pretty good lighting, but not great lighting. It certainly was not Dark Sky standards. And now we have terminology updated, up to date. On March 6, I handed a binder like this, except it was green for environmentalism, to Grady Miller. He has a copy of this for the last three weeks. And we've gotten a lot of support. These ordinances are in a PDF form on our website, although we had a glitch today, and it's going to hopefully go back up tomorrow or the next day. I just wanted to say that, you know, we're now up to certain standards. The council over the years, every person on the council and prior council has supported dark skies. We're for dark skies, and we hope that that's something that can continue to really be for dark skies as opposed to, we're for dark skies, but. So this is now the test. We've turned it in. We've done the work. And what I would like, and I think a lot of people would like, is essentially someone on the council to put it on the agenda. And so I'm asking the council to put this on the agenda for review of the town, by the town, and the citizens, because it's online, everybody can look at it, and I mean, everybody. And then together, we can talk about it, but as quickly as possible. I'm also asking for that. Let's get it on the agenda. We don't need delays. We can actually do it. And we can enter the Arizona dark sky world. By the way, there's six other towns and cities in Arizona that are dark sky, dark sky international towns, bringing in people all over the world, from all over the world. We can do it too. And we're already claiming that we're dark sky. We like dark sky. And I know the people definitely like dark sky. So thank you very much. Just wanted to make that announcement. And I'm under three minutes. Thank you very much. My apologies. I have to leave. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bruce.
Could, could we get that on the agenda?
We, we can. We can put on the agenda. Great.
Mayor and Council, I realize this is an agenda size really for the discussion. But what I would anticipate is, I think the staff and I would prefer to have a formal council direction to staff to go back and evaluate what has been submitted to us. And, and so I will bring that up to the council at a future agenda. And then based on the staff's analysis, then we'll bring that back to you for your review.
We'd also had, talked about having another public meeting, a public town hall meeting. I don't know, what are we calling those meetings?
Open houses.
Open houses, yeah.
Right.
And open houses to, to make, to make sure there's clear understanding with everybody.
Right. Okay. So I will, if you're okay, I'll come back at a future date with requests to direct staff to do these activities we just talked about.
Can we just direct them now?
Yeah.
Have them take a look at it?
This is not agenda size. It's a call to the public. And it's, this is not, this is very irregular to take an action on something that is not on the agenda.
Okay, we'll work on it.
Okay.
Others?
No additional speakers.
Okay, so now we're at the talent manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just a few items to bring to you, to your attention tonight. As you're aware, next week, we begin our town council workshops on the proposed budget for next year. I also wanted to let the council know that the public will also have an opportunity to provide input and feedback and ask questions of staff regarding the budget at two separate open houses. The first open house will take place on Tuesday next week from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's a walk-in. It's not going to be two hours long for presentation, but it's a drop-in kind of open house. And it'll be from 5:00 to 7:00. The second one will take place on Thursday, April 4th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So we're trying to reach people in two different hours, you know, in the morning and also early evening. The other announcement I want to make is that Bike Week, as you're aware, starts this week. Want to remind residents and the, the public to watch for motorcycles. And please be patient with all the additional traffic and crowds we have at this time in town. The mayor already mentioned the successful rodeo today's event. There's not really much to add, other than from an outside perspective, looking in for the first time, I was very impressed with the oil, well-oiled machine of the group, the volunteers, the organizers of the event. It just, it was something that I think I had no idea what I was going to expect. And it really exceeded all of my expectations, having been involved in similar types of events. Finally, the last topic I wanted to brief the council on are the next steps relating to the proposed Morning Star Trail. You recall back the first meeting in February, there were concerns that were brought up by both council members and the public who were there. As a result of that, I am recommending, and we will be holding a open house from 5:00 to 7:00 on Tuesday, April 23rd, in the council chamber, right in here in this room. Again, the purpose of the open house is to provide additional information about the proposed trail, seek input and ideas from residents about the proposed trail and any other options that there may be or other alternatives. I'm also proposing that the council consider establishing a seven-member ad hoc task force to evaluate the Morning Star Trail and other options and alternatives. The idea is, is that task force will come back at a later date and issue its findings and recommendations to the council. And then the council will take those into consideration before either taking action on the proposed Morning Star Trail or other possible trail alternatives. The task force will include representatives from both sides of the issue, at least this is what I'm recommending, and have a limited number of meetings and duration not to exceed three to four months. I'd also ask that the, the task force be approximately seven people in, in length or number. So after the open house on April 23rd, I will seek emails of interest from residents who wish to serve on the task force. We'll also have a signup list at the open house. That's a great way I try to see if people would have interest and also wanting to serve. I would anticipate the council appointing residents to the task force sometime in June, with the first meeting taking place sometime in August. The idea is that we would be starting that process up in August and probably take about three months. And then to come back to council with findings, recommendations. The reason why I'm suggesting the council do the appointment is that we will try to have this be as transparent as possible. We will do meeting notices and work with the newspapers and our website and social media to try to get information out there. So the public has an opportunity to be aware of it. They will also, these meetings will also be held in very public manners so that the public can also participate and attend those meetings. If they're not fortunate to be on the committee, they will definitely have involvement in this through their public participation at those meetings. That is all I have to report. If the council has any other ideas or suggestions regarding the Morning Star Trail proposal, I'd be happy to, to follow up on that. Thank you.
Is it, if it's Morning Star, you can go.
It is Morning Star. One of the things I'd like to see that, that committee take a look at is there are a number of private trails. And there's got, I've talked to several people, and they're more than happy to have horses cross their property as long as they stay on the, the existing trail. But they really don't want to provide an easement. I'd like to see if they could also take a look and have our lawyer take a look to find out if it's legal, if we would put a sign up that says, private trail, horses only, use at your own risk. That way, it, it takes away from the, you know, any liability issues. But if they can look at some alternatives like that. There's a, a big problem up in the north part of town already with Akava Springs piece, because we have dirt bikers and everything else that goes there. And so if you put a public trail in there, you're not going to keep the dirt bikes out. And it's problematic. I mean, it really is. And so I'd like to see if maybe we can examine a little bit out of the box alternatives too.
So noted. Thank you. I appreciate the feedback.
I'm going back a couple of subjects, Grady. The open house for the budget. Will it have an agenda? Or how will people understand what's in the budget? Can you?
Sure. Yeah. So, so what we're going to do, it's, it's not just, look, this is the budget. Please provide us your input. We're really, as you know, we're behind the curve on this. And normally what I would have done where I've worked before, we would have had this probably in January, and the public would be able to tell us about either service levels that they'd like to see either increased or areas of problems that maybe we need to address through the budget. So we're going to do a combination of that. We're going to basically show the budget, the supplemental budget requests that the departments have asked for. We're going to show them our base budget, and we're going to show them the five-year forecasts that we have. And then we're also going to ask them for their input. So again, this week that we're doing this sessions with the public is before the council actually has their session. So the only session the council has next week is actually on the capital improvement program. And then when they get into the actual budget workshops, anything that comes out of this, any ideas or suggestions, we're going to make sure the council's made aware of that. So I appreciate the question because this is not a, what I would call a rubber stamping or lip service kind of thing. It's, we do want to hear from the public and hear what they would like to see or what concerns they may have that need to be addressed.
But from what I'm hearing, people have to be here at the beginning of it to understand each step.
It's a drop-in session.
Well, but if they came at six o'clock, they'd miss an hour's worth of whatever.
No, it's, it's, it's a drop-in. What we'll have is basically a PowerPoint will just be running continuously. We'll have a couple easels set up and department directors, and the finance director will be here. And so it's a drop-in. They're, they're not going to miss anything, except for, to your point, yes, somebody may ask questions, and they may have missed out on that. But.
But the subject, they'll still be able to.
Absolutely.
Stay on top. Okay, very good.
And the reason why we, we'd like the open house format, it's, it's more comfortable for people because a lot of times the public gets intimidated. They go to something that looks overly formalized, and, and they don't feel comfortable asking questions. So we try to make it as comfortable and, and as non-threatening as possible.
Very good. Thanks, Grady.
Bob, I have one comment, and that is, over the past, what, 10 days, we've had, thank you. We've had an incredible amount of activity. And Teresa needs a shout out for keeping us on track, keeping things organized. And thank you very much.
She always needs a shout out. Thank you, Teresa.
Another one. A lot of feathers in her hair.
Nice job, Paul. Anyone else? Thank you, Grady.
Thank you.
The actual items on tonight's agenda, the first one is the council discussion action to approve the, approve the use of a cooperative purchase agreement for Maricopa County contract serial number 220-265-S, Asphalt Service and Repair with VSS International Incorporated for an amount up to $151,206.52 in order to perform chip seal and CAPE seal projects for Skyline Hidden Valley Drive, 49th Street, and Stagecoach Pass Drive, as identified in the town's pavement management plan. This is presented by the town engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Today, we're talking about another part of our pavement management plan. Earlier this year, we brought an $840,000 project to you, which was the Mill and Pave Projects. We tried to group those all together. On this one, we're doing the chip seal slash CAPE seal projects and putting them all together to try and get economy of scale. And we found that Maricopa County had a contract. Carefree was doing the project, but they didn't, theirs was not an assumable contract. So, but while the, while BSS was out in the area, we decided that we could piggyback on theirs. We're saving quite a bit of money by doing so, just using the Maricopa County contract instead. The projects we're discussing tonight are 49th Street, north of Carefree Highway. We have a, those are in a marginal, what's rated as marginal condition, below 60. Hidden Valley Skyline, we replaced a large amount of that earlier today, or earlier this year as part of the Mill and Pave Project. Those were in the 34 to 46 range that we replaced, which is, 40 is usually the level at which they say just rip it all out and redo the base and start all over again. And so this is the chip seal portion, which is running in the 50s for a pavement condition index. And then Stagecoach Pass, while it wasn't on the list, the portion that we're replacing had a 40, has a 47 pavement condition index. The only reason it wasn't on there was because the portion that was in, that's shared between Carefree and Cave Creek Road on that was actually in much better condition. So they couldn't link the projects together, which is one of the algorithms they ran when they did the pavement condition. So just so I can, I'll geek out here for a minute. What is, what is a pavement condition index? It's, as of the time of the town's publishing of this little magic report in August of 2020, the town had an average pavement condition index of 67, which was actually above the national average. So we were actually better than the national average. And it included 69 for arterials, 57 for collector roads, and 65 for local roads. We had a 12% of our, of our roads were considered excellent, which had an 80, which is an 85 or better. But it was below the target of, that they look for, 15%. We had 12%. And then the town had a backlog of 6.4%, which is PCI is from 0 to 40%, and which roads are in poor, very poor condition, which is below the recommended value, which is actually better than the recommended, maximum recommended value of 12%. So we were actually, we didn't have as many really bad roads, but we didn't have as many really good roads before we started our journey down the pavement management plan. So the pavement condition index itself is composed of 33% of what's called a roughness index and 67% of which is called the surface distress index. So we'll start with the biggest one first, which is the surface distress. And so following the Arizona's, or American Society of Testing Materials 6433, it includes evaluation of things like alligator cracking, wheel path rutting, longitudinal transverse block and edge cracks, patching, distortions, ravelling, and bleeding of oil out of the pavements. So it, they go out and it looks like a van with cameras that are mounted to it. They go and take pictures of all the, they drove every road in town, took pictures of it, fed those conditions into an, into a computer program and spit out a, a surface distress index that was then later used. Roughness index, they're doing the same thing in which they're measuring the change in elevation over distance as a slope and re, and reported in millimeters per meter. The, the International Roughness Index, which is a national, or an international publication, then is converted to the score using, on a zero to 100, by using a formula that has, that uses the national logarithm of the index. So for geek talk, that means that they actually have a methodology that they are using repeatedly to come up with the index. And we're compared against the national and international standard on that.
How do they count potholes?
Potholes are continued, are part of the patching. So if you have a patching pothole, that's considered, if you've patched a pothole, that's considered in the surface distress index.
Now, I'm talking about, I've been driving some of the back roads here. We've got quite a few potholes that have not been built.
Yeah. So as soon as we get, so those would be, again, this is from August of, this report was published in August of 20. We try and identify those, you know, those roads, but we have not come up with another, it's a rather expensive study. The last time we did it was around 7.
I'm just talking about Schoolhouse. I mean, you can drive down, there's four or five potholes there.
Okay. Well, we will, I will write a note and have our guys go out and repair the potholes.
Mr. Mayor. Just, just to add on to Councilmember Rhodes' comments, so there is a formula that's programmed into like the annual deterioration rate from the time that we initially got the PCI index number. So, so to your point, there is, we're not saying that as a 2020, that's the number we're working with. It's, it's continuing to change and evolve. And we recognize that with puddles that come up.
I understand. I was just taking, I was using Schoolhouse as an example because it's a high-volume surface. And there's, there's a number of.
Right.
Jumps out.
Yes. And we, we recognize, we recognize that when, what we found lately with the, with Schoolhouse specifically, well, it's not one of the ones we're talking about today, is that we had an incident about three weeks ago where we had a rainstorm. And we went out there because it was actually, water was getting underneath the pavement. And it was, it was, we were watching a pavement fountain create potholes because the water was getting underneath. And, you know, it's one of those things, as you're watching and going, well, this is bad. But we're trying to, we're trying to do that. We may.
No, no, I'm not picking on you. I mean, I think you're doing a great job. I just wanted to highlight, we have.
We have potholes.
Quite a few, yeah.
Yes. And, and they're, and like I said, it was, I think this, it was probably the one I was looking at at that day was a yard, a yard by a yard, and about eight inches deep. It was pretty major, and it had just blown out from a storm event.
Is there a way for folks to, to, you know, on the website, if you find a pothole, call this number or something?
Well, if they call into the front, if they call into the front desk, call Roxy at the front desk. She will put together a work order right then.
Okay.
And we do have a process because we, we are a complaint, complaint responsive organization.
No, I understand. Could we put something like that on the website, you know, potholes?
Okay, we could do that. Because right now, it's, it's through a.
It's only going to get worse in June.
Oh, yes.
So a good art, a good article in the Cave Creek Corner or some other push notifications as opposed to having people having to come to look for the, the process online, let them know it's there.
Okay.
That's this, I've been around 11 years. First I've heard of this, so.
Yeah, we always get calls and we always fill out work orders. And usually within a week, we have the pothole fixed. We don't want to have potholes either.
That's been my experience as an elected official. When I see them, I just contact Hal, and they take care of them.
We're gone. But we go through a lot of pothole mix. Let's put it that way. So as far as the, so I think I've bored you enough with how we could figure out pavement condition indexes.
Hell, this is not boring.
That's an engineer speaking.
But from the, but, but as a rating, if you want to put words to it, when you see a pavement condition index, 85 to 100 is excellent, and it basically gives you 15 to 25 years of remaining life. Very good is 70 to 85, and it's a 12 to 20 timeframe. Good, 60 to 70, and that's 10 to 15 years of life remaining. Marginal affair is the 40 to 60, and it's seven to 12 years. Poor, 25 to 40, five to 10. So in our, in, in road speak, that's getting pretty, you know, pretty short. And very poor, 0 to 25 is the PCI score, and you're looking at a zero to five years left. A lot of times, it's, you're already on dirt or gravel underneath. So these roads have been prioritized based on the pavement management plan and also cost savings. And the way they're prioritized in the pavement management plan is that the roads are segmented on a block by block basis throughout the, throughout the manual. The program then aggregates the centerline segments of these blocks, and then it looks for light problems. And then it prioritize, it groups the, groups the local street along a homogeneous route or aggregated together with the pavement management plan. So it starts putting together projects. And this is in the algorithm that they run as part of the pavement management. And arterial streets and collectors are treated separately. Those are treated as a running, so like a collector, like Schoolhouse, is run basically block by block with some of the streets that are. is run basically block by block with some of the streets that are connected. The segment, the segments are joined with pavement conditions and functional classifications where the problems are homogeneous in nature. So if you're, very rarely do you see something where it's a thirty six pavement condition, and then the next block is a ninety and then eighty five, and then another's, you know, another thirty six. It does happen in Cape Creek, but it's because of our wash crossings. But a lot of times they're, they're fairly homogeneous, and so we can treat it with one one type of fix. So like when we brought you the mill and paves, they were all mill and paves that we did where we mill out a piece of the, mill out the asphalt and then come in, you know, and pave over it again. These are all, what we're bringing you today are all chip seals where they're, they're just basically a, a layer of like an oily sand on that's been put on and rolled. Then you come in and put the three eighth inch gravel on top of it. And then you'll finish it with another layer, a thinner layer of the oil sand mixture to finish it off. So it looks like pavement at the end of the day, but it's just to add an, another layer that's actually better than what is there today, covers up the imperfections of the pavement, levels them out and then gives a better wear for the future. And so when we did the prioritization in this report, we gave the consultant a million dollars that we were estimating that we were going to work with a million dollars a year in pavement replacement. As many of you realize, we didn't do that for about the first two or three years because of other, other important things that came up before, before the town. So we didn't, we didn't do that. This year we're on a catch up pace. And I have not really, I have not looked yet at how that is. We were going to give you a report next week on where we are in the pavement management program. Now we'll be more than ready to give you that update next week. And so these priority, where do these get, where do these projects that you're looking at today stand on the priority? Forty ninth street was originally supposed to be done in fiscal year twenty three. It was a year one project that was supposed to have been done. Skyline was originally also a twenty three, a year one project. The mill and pay portion was performed earlier this year, probably within the last month, month and a half, we finished the, we finished that project. And then we've had everyone else saying, well, it looks really good here. Why does it end here and not continue? And that's what, that's what the chip seal, cape seal is going to be doing. And then the Stagecoach Pass had, again, I said a PCI of forty seven, which would put it in the mark, low marginal. Not quite poor, but low marginal rating. And the work has just, some of the work has just been done by Carefree on the rest of the road. So it's to finish out the look on the road again. So it doesn't look like we just stopped mid-project. With that, at the end of the day, what we're aspiring to as far as a pavement index is we'd like to get to an overall to raise it from a sixty seven to a seventy one over the course of this pavement management program. And maintain our backlog to less than ten percent is what we really like to do. And like I said, the backlog of roads that have fallen to such disrepair that they have to be their own project before we can repair them. And last year we did a project, we did twenty sixth street, which was one of those projects that didn't show up on the pavement management plan. But it was in the thirties as far as the condition index. So we went ahead and did that project, even though it hadn't been listed as a priority within the pavement management plan. It was so bad and that, you know, it was basically a series of connected potholes. So we did go ahead and do that.
Al.
Sure.
You, you've got a million dollars here between the, the mill and pave you've done and this project here. My recollection from the budget is we, we allocated two million dollars. Are you going to hit?
Close to, yes, because the thing is, we also had projects like a Royal Road, which were, and which was a new project for emergency. We had, and fortunately we've been coming in lower on, lower than estimated on our projects. So we, there was a little savings there. But I think the mill and pay projects were in the budget at nine hundred and twenty five thousand, and we brought them in for eight hundred and forty thousand. So a little bit of savings from estimated to actual.
I think we also put tandem and tally hoe in there.
We had tandem and tally hoe in there that will be, where we've spent some of the money on the design. We're going to be carrying over the money into fiscal year twenty five because we won't get the construction finished by the end of fiscal year twenty four. So it'll be moved to hopefully start construction in twenty five. So that'll move over.
So you're, you're not going to start construction on, on the tally hoe until?
We don't have the, we don't have the, right now as we're sitting here today, almost April, we are still working with the consultant to get the plans out. Once we get the plans out, then we, then we have to have it on the street for at least thirty days to meet state procurement. So FY twenty five, so it will be FY twenty five will be June, will be July first of, of twenty four that we would do. Sorry, I forgot to use the fiscal year, but it will be fiscal year twenty five. So it will be delayed by, it will be delayed till start till after July first to the new fiscal year. And so we're working with about seventy two and a half miles of paved roads in the town, and we have about seven miles of unpaved road, including what we just added for a Royal Road. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have on the chip seal, cape seal projects that we have coming up here.
Questions? Looks like there's no questions. There is. There's public comment on this?
I have no one wishing to speak.
I have, I have one that has been sent in and they do not want the comments read aloud, which we normally do, but the the individual Jeff Riggins is in support of the, of the expenditure tonight. With that, we look for a motion then to put this into effect.
Motion to approve the civil cooperative purchase agreement for Maricopa County contract serial number two, two, zero, two, six, five, TAC S asphalt service and repair with VSS International Incorporated for an amount up to a hundred and fifty one thousand, two hundred and six dollars and fifty two cents in order to perform chip seal and cape seal projects with Highline Hidden Valley Drive, Forty Ninth Street and Stage Coast Pass Drive as identified in the town's pavement management plan.
Second. Hey, this is, first of all, your comments, you had the, you had the motion, Dusty.
I mean, I'm glad to see we're finally attacking the pavement management plan and we're finally going to get this off. I really would like to see if we can squeeze the contractor that's working on tandem and tally hoe also to get that done. I mean, those poor people. I mean, I really do feel for them and, and I'd like to get that done before, before monsoon season if possible. I know that you said that's virtually impossible now, but I wonder if we can start the, it'd be really nice to have that done before we have one of the big monsoons hit.
Agreed. I had a conversation with the consultant last week trying to push the, push the run over the plate.
Okay. Other than that, I, I think it's great that we're, we're allocating the money to, to fix the roadways.
You have the second?
Yeah, I think we have two things working together here. One is the analysis that Hal has given to us. It's professionally done. These are people that really know what they're doing. And then we have the people who drive the roads, and those people certainly have the ability, and we invite them to come in and, and speak to you, speak to staff about it because there are things we may observe that other people don't because we drive the roads.
Other comments from council? Seeing none, we are ready for a roll call.
Councilmember Oberton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Member Alkema?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Base man Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Bush and Kerry, seven, zero. We're on to the next and final item, which is council discussion approval to award the guaranteed maximum price, number two, to the construction manager at risk contract with MGC Contractors Incorporated for the majority of the work associated with completing the new water interconnect with Phoenix for an amount up to sixteen million. That's not a misprint. Three hundred, thirty six thousand, one hundred and four dollars presented by Utility Street.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I'd like to introduce, I think he's been here before, but Todd Hanson is sitting beside me. Todd's actually the project principal for MGC Contractors. So if we have any detailed questions, he's willing to answer those, but I'll just take the lead on this and I won't go through the actual document itself, which is in front of me, the actual contract documents. So this is the guarantee maximum price number two award is back in December that we awarded the guarantee maximum price number one on this project. It was just under two million dollars, and that was to authorize MGC to pre-purchase some equipment for a project of this nature, things like electrical gear and some other switch gears have long lead items. So to meet our project schedule, we already authorized that. So in effect, the project's already been kicked off. But at that time, we, we notified council, we would be coming back with the, the bulk of it, and that's tonight's agenda item. And the bulk of the purchase for the project itself. So it's been just a quick moment. I always like to explain why are we doing this? This is a huge expenditure for the town. We don't take this lightly. So why would the town enter into this? Really goes back to how the town's water system is laid out. We have a single pipeline. For people who don't know, we, ninety percent of our town's water supplies come from the Colorado River through the Central Arizona Project. We have a single pipeline that runs up Cave Creek Road over twelve miles to the water treatment plant through a series of four boosters. The pipeline and the boosters themselves all, in fact, are single points of failures in that system. While we have some reservoirs that were constructed in town and built in town, we don't have much storage. We have to actually, we can't just keep the tanks full. Several people have asked me because of water quality issues. So we tried to keep them as full as we can, but we never know when an emergency is going to happen. So the, the town's water system itself is inherently has prone to failure and risk more so. So the town entered into two intergovernmental agreements with the city of Phoenix. Both, I think, were twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. The first agreement actually just dealt with domestic and fire surface south of Carefree Highway. That actually was historically a water company area that Phoenix owned. The town had provided some service down there and that cleaned up that boundary. The second agreement is better for the town. Well, the second allowed for them, the town to get Phoenix to treat is called divert, treat and deliver our CAP water. So we're not getting new water from Phoenix. They're actually giving us and treating our raw cap water. So instead of us having to send it up our pipeline through our booster pumps to our treatment plant, Phoenix will do that for us and then deliver it to a point at Carefree Highway. In effect, that, that gives us a connection point. They limited us to a thousand gallons a minute, which is about one point four million gallons a day. Just to put that in context, the, the town's summer demands just peak just under three million gallons a day. So it's about half of our summer demands. But in the winter time for a few months, it actually is enough water to actually supply the town with complete backup to our water system. So again, it's providing us with a second water supply source, which we don't currently have. And it's in greatly increasing the town's overall water supplies and reliability of our water system for doing this. And Phoenix isn't just giving us a connection on their existing system. Phoenix is actually investing a lot of money to make this connection work. I think during December, I always mistake, and I, I think I mentioned that Phoenix has just awarded the contract for about fourteen million dollars. I thought that was all the work. I've actually since been corrected. Phoenix is actually spending about twenty million dollars south of the town in order to make sure that the pressure zone that we're going to tie on to will be able to adequately supply the pressure needed and provide a thousand gallons a minute and provide airflow for the area south of Carefree Highway, the commercial properties. So they have two sections of sixteen inch pipelines that they're building shown on the map here, and they're actually upgrading existing booster station that they have. This is all in their pressure zone ten. So we're the top end of the pressure zone ten. So they have to make a considerable investment to actually get the water up to us reliably. So in total, those projects are totally about twenty million dollars in investment that Phoenix is making, the town is not participating in. So when we, the town, and this goes back, this project, I was trying to think back in time, you know, I've, I joined the town in April of two thousand and nineteen, and we were actually talking about relocating the cat booster pump stations. The, so the, the, the project site that we actually were looking at was originally for relocation of the cat four booster, but we actually did think about a Phoenix interconnect because the IGA's had, had just recently been signed. So when we talked about a site, it had to be something that was close to where the connection with Phoenix will be. We have the existing sixteen inch pipeline south of Carefree Highway will be disconnected from our system and, and isolated. What Phoenix is going to do is actually convert that line into a line that would feed a new booster pump state, our new interconnect site. We also had to think about water quality and water age. What I mean by that, if you just bring the water into our distribution system, we need to, A, bring it in. We just can't have a thousand gallons a minute coming in because our system doesn't always demand that. So it makes sense to put it into a reservoir. Then we can feed our system as our, our system demands. That's why we need to have a reservoir at this site. We also have to look at how we move this water through our system. We have, you know, every quarter I bring up reports and I talk about the water flushing that we have to do in our system. We have a lot, a lot of long dead end lines in our system. And even our existing reservoir, especially our Rockaway reservoir, it's hard to manage that water because if it sits up there, the system demands don't draw it down. So we manually have to manipulate the system to draw that water down to keep water age down. And that's for water quality, water age issues. Because it's not just getting wet water in the pipes. We actually have to make sure that we meet all regulatory compliance issues. So that was something that we had to consider with putting this site. We, we start mapping out all the equipment that's needed. We start talking about reservoir, booster station, dual zone boosters, and then the town's original goal, which was to relocate the cat four booster pump station. It's one of the three booster pumps stations that is actually below, located in a vault below ground. So that narrowed down to the site that was available. And the site that the town did purchase in twenty twenty, it's a three point six acre site. But it's the next slides will show, while it sounds like a large site, we're, we're actually putting a lot on that, and there's some other constrictions that limit what we can do. So the site itself does have adjoining neighbors. We did, actually did have a, a project site meeting to talk with the neighbors just last month, February twenty ninth. And we got some feedback from the, from the neighbors. But this is the site itself, a sort of a conceptual layout that, that people will see. So starting at the top right corner, we will be doing a new deceleration lane on Cave Creek Road. So as traffic comes in, which, you know, we're not, we're not going to allow a lot of traffic, but we're going to actually have a deceleration lane. That's partly because the, this portion of Cave Creek Road is actually in Carefree, and Carefree asked us to do that. But it does help, you know, if we bring a, a project or equipment to the site, and there's enough area for product or for trucks to actually pull out in front of the gates so that they're not actually hanging back out in the Cave Creek Road. The site itself has an existing wash. As you can see, that, that covers through the site. So we're maintaining that wash, the flow that naturally went across the site. We have a large stormwater basin because that's actually required because we actually have to maintain our stormwater for all this site. And then you get into the yellow shaded area, which is the equipment. So we tried to locate all the equipment as close as we could to Carefree Road, our Cape Creek Road, sorry, to keep it away. There, there is a booster pump station. It'll be a little bit of noise associated with it. But we also have an eight foot site wall placed around the entire area that's shaded in yellow. And then we are making provisions for the one million gallon storage reservoir that will actually receive the Phoenix, city of Phoenix water and then get boosted into our system. And then the site will bring forward GMP number two, because at the December meeting, we also awarded a contract with Black and Veatch, whose designers to finish off the design of the relocation of the cat four booster pump station to the site and a small storage reservoir. That will actually help optimize the town's water treatment plant because currently we have a disjoint between the delivery flows on the, of the cat pipeline and how we can optimize the use of the pall membranes at the plant. So the, by putting a small reservoir at this site, a hundred thousand gallon and inline boosters is going to allow us to optimize the flow of our raw water up to the water treatment plant, which will actually allow us to produce less backwash water at the plant. So it'll help our overall goal to be more efficient with the town's raw water use. So as you can see, while it's a three point six acre site, by the time I put everything onto it, it fills itself up quite quickly. We also have done things like put a landscape berm on the west side of the site that you got a four to one slope on it with a, with a center top. We're using salvage landscape material from this site, and now that there's going to have some material that we're actually going to salvage also from the water ranch because of the ongoing work at the, the food bank building, there's actually some areas that are being cleared. So we're actually going to salvage some of that material and bring it up to the site also. And taking a quick step back, you know, why, why this site, I talked about a dual zone booster. Why do we need dual zone? And taking a quick step back, you know, why, why this site, I talked about a dual zone booster. Why do we need dual zone? What that means is we actually have two sets of booster pumps that pu- put out different pressures in the system. This is a pressure map of the town's distribution system, uh, again, both between, uh, Cave Creek and our Desert Hills customers. So this site is located in our pressure zone one. The heart of the system right now is a water treatment plant at our near east side. The near east side actually boosts into pressure zone seven, and then it, it uses a series of pressure reducing valves to, to bring that. Uh, lower that pressure to go into our pressure on four, then a pressure on one. But then we, we, we cross Cave Creek Wash and we can, uh, we can, uh, continue to lower the pressure as we actually go down, uh, down gradient. And to the west. Um, so that's the purpose of the dual zone booster at this site that, um, to really make the advantage out of this system to really provide a reliable backup for the town or add to system reliability is that this site will actually be able to send that water north into the pressure zone four. Which then we can use to feed the near reservoir. So we can effectively take the water treatment plant offline to do some major maintenance. Feed the system from this interconnect site and still get water throughout the entire system. So that's a, it's just one of the design parameters that we have and the great things about this, this interconnect. Okay. It's not something we're going to use all the time, but it gives us the leeway as a town now to do major work on the cap pipeline, on the cap booster pump stations, on the water treatment plant. Um, because we can do a planned outage, uh, during low flow demands in the winter time, which is something we can't do. It's very challenging system to manage and maintain and, uh, because everything's critical. We can't be offline very long. Uh, limited amount of time in the summertime. It's, it's hours before we get into critical situations sometimes. So what's, uh, happened to date? Uh, so it was last July that we awarded the contract to MGC. So we went through, this is a construction manager at risk. It's considered an alternate delivery method for construction. It's allowed for under, uh, Arizona revised statutes. Um, so we did a pre-selection. So we actually went out and dislist station. So instead of having our design ready, which we weren't ready, uh, we went out and, and selected or, uh, asked contractors for proposals. And so MGC was selected through that process. Uh, we actually had a team of people, including, um, um, engineers from other cities that were sitting in and, and, um, had a, a panel that pre-selected, um, MGC is the best contractor to move us forward. So July, we entered into a pre-construction services contract. Um, so while Black and Beach was completing their design, MGC then went through the, the project design. And looked for things like, uh, we did value engineering. We, we looked at scope and the cost, and we actually have had to do some, uh, hard looking at this site. Originally we had a concrete block wall around the site. But the, when you look at the length of that wall and the concrete footing is really what the cost was. It was an eight hundred thousand dollar add to the project to do a concrete raw wall rather than the, the metal well, all just because of the amount of concrete. We had to make smarter decisions like, uh, emergency backup generator because of the size of the site, uh, of, of adding a generator at this time would add about a million dollars to the project cost. We're adding the provisions to allow us to add a generator in the future. There'll be a, what's called a transfer switch and a connection point. And that's something that the town can look at to try and receive future funds like a grant fund or something else to help us manage it. Um, so that was the effort that started last July. And that, uh, came to December when we came forward with the guarantee maximum price number one, which is just under two million dollars. Which authorized MGC to, to go out and purchase on the town's behalf, some of the equipment that was necessary that had longer lead items while we finished up the rest of the design. And got to this point where they can then, uh, they went out and actually then did all their bid packages, which is what's in here. They looked at all their subcontractors to make sure they conformed all the bids. Made sure we was buil- building the same scope to work. And then, uh, we, we, they put together a package, which is there delivering to us, which is the approval of guarantee maximum price number two for just over sixteen million dollars. This makes up the majority of the work on the project itself. The one thing that we'll be coming back for, um, is a GMP number two, uh, or three, sorry, which will be adding the final scope of work for the, the CAP, uh, for booster, uh, pump station and reservoir. Um, we could ask MGC to give us an allowance at this point, but MGC, but Black and Beach is still doing the design on that. So we want to make sure we get a good design, which gives us better bids, which gives us better pricing. We're, uh, expecting to use some of the contingencies that are sitting currently in the GMP number two to, to push, put that afford it. But I'm thinking that, that we'll be asking for about eight hundred thousand dollars in funding at that point and the contingencies that. The last estimate we got from G C is about, it's about one point four million dollars worth of work to relocate the cap for booster pump station to the site. So in total, we're looking about nineteen million dollars and, uh, for this project for construction. So it is massive. We don't take that lightly at all. And something that's, you know, I think it's very serious that the town has entered into, to do this. So the next thing is how do you fund a project this large for the town? Uh, so this slide is showing you the project funding versus the project costs. So from this fiscal year forward to the engine completion, we're looking at about twenty-four months for completion. The spring of two thousand and twenty-six, uh, we need about twenty-two point one million dollars in funding to complete it. And that's, uh, both the work that MGC is doing is the contracts that we've awarded to Black and Beach. They have to wrap up their design. On the CAP booster, um, side of the project, they're, they're doing the permitting right now on the project, and then they also have construction administration. And then the town has some, uh, whatever miscellaneous costs. So you'll see on the left side of the slide is the project funding. And that's made up of a number of components and I'll highlight the fact that we've got in total close to five million dollars in effectively grant funds on this project. So the SF LRF is state and local fiscal recovery funds. Those were, um, I think they're sometimes referred to as the COVID relief grant funds. That's money that came from the federal government. So there's been discussions, uh, through council, through budgeting about dedicating those funds to this project. We actually have to expend those, uh, this, uh, fiscal year in order to, to avoid having to do a, a, a one point audit. I think a single point audit is what they call it next year. But, uh, with the schedule we have now, we'll expend those one point nine million dollars. We just recently received a congressional grant for two million dollars for the project. Um, so we put that application in. Uh, actually I'll, I'll give kudos to Shirley Fox. Actually did that application for us. If people remember Shirley, uh, and got that going. So this project's been around for a while. We've been, we've been thinking about how we can get this project going. We also do the, um, loan with the water, Arizona water, um, with a water infrastructure finance authority. And as part of that loan document, they actually gave us a million dollars of, the original loan was just under thirteen point two million dollars, but then they came back and said, we'll give you the loan, but the first million dollars of that is, is forgive, what they call forgivable principle. Um, uh, what that means is a grant. So we have a million dollar grant from WIFA and then the loan instead of being a thirteen point two is, is, uh, twelve point, uh, one eight million dollars. So it's a great win for the town. And the town also has a water fund, water fund thirty, which is actually set aside for large capital improvements and large maintenance projects. Currently there is a, um, some money was set aside this fiscal year and then, uh, but there's actually a balance in that. And every year there's new revenues, uh, go into that fund. So, uh, for the next couple of years, most of that monies will be swept. They're not, not swept, but directed towards this project. So in total, we do have the twenty-two point one million dollars that we're talking about to allow us to move forward with tonight's action and even the GMP number three. Cause I, uh, allowed for that to make sure we can go through and complete the project. So. Oh, one thing I wanted to mention too, when the GMP document itself, uh, went through a lot of reviews, you know, while we have Black and Beach also on board. The town actually brought in a third party reviewer. So another engineering firm called, uh, Wilson Engineers, um, they're, uh, currently doing some work. They're actually doing the overall coordination for the city of Phoenix for the project south of us, but they actually looked through the document themselves. They had a few weeks to look through it, brought up several issues. We actually had a coordination issue, uh, meeting and you'll see at the back of the GMP document, there's actually two pages of just their notes and responses. So we actually had a couple of meetings with MGC to go through it. I like to say that we saved some money. We actually found a couple of, we clarified some scopes. So, uh, we actually missed a, a piece of pipe. So we actually went up a little bit, but the exercise was very good to go through because they actually combed through the entire document. They looked at our contracts and made sure everything was in performance. Black and Beach also has been very actively involved in looking at all the bid packages received, making sure they agree with everything. So we've got, you know, two engineering firms that have looked at it, town staff have looked at it. And I think that, uh, MGC has put together a, a good comprehensive, um, uh, package for the town. So we just didn't, we didn't take it lightly and, and just accept the binder. We did a lot of reviews on this document before we brought it forward to council very quickly. So the next steps are, uh, with tonight's action, I can issue a notice to proceed to Black and Beach. Um, they're very certain thing about the site. They would install a new, uh, fence around the site. Uh, we would start doing some work on the west side of the site, um, specifically. Uh, looking to salvage some of the native plants and then, uh, start the rough grading. So in a few months, you'll start to see, um, some of the grading will start grading out. The, the berm will start to take shape. The retention base will start to take shape. But there is still a lot of underground work, but generally you'll start to see the, the flow of the site. Um, and then it's about twenty-four months of construction. So the construction will ebb and flow, um, twenty-four months is largely because of all the equipment that we have to purchase, even though we started early by, uh, pre-purchasing equipment in December. It's still things like electrical equipment, electrical gear. Um, we, we won't have a final APS design until we actually get the town permit. Which we just did a reconciliation meeting today. There's a couple of idea, uh, things to do and then we can submit that to APS. So they don't even start the final design till we get a permitted design to them. We're still working with Maricopa County. So we've got a few other things just to clean up, but we're thinking about twenty-four months of construction. And that gets us to time, um, just a little after when Phoenix has done their work, their pipeline work, um, I've been told will take just over a year. It's their booster pump station design or upgrade, which will take longer than that. So they should be completing, uh, a few months before us. So they'll actually have the delivery mechanism in place for us to accept it when this site is ready. So everything's timing itself, uh, work out very, very quickly or closely. So with that, I've given a lot of information, but really the action we're asking council tonight is to award the guaranteed maximum price number two to MGC contractors. Just under, just over sixteen million dollars. And this will be, um, again, we'll be coming back in, um, a few months with the GMP number three, but we've built all this into the project, uh, of funding and, and budgeting that we've done moving forward. And this will allow the town to build a new interconnect site with Phoenix and also allow us to relocate the cap for booster pump station above ground and, and optimize our delivery mechanism to our existing water treatment plant. With that, I can answer any questions.
Question.
I have, I don't have a question, um, uh, but I do have a comment. This is an amazing amount of information and much appreciated. I'm not sure I understand very much of that. It's pretty technical, but I really do appreciate it. And that comes to the whole business of communicating what we're doing as a council and as a staff. Uh, and communicating that to, uh, the folks here in town. And what I've noticed, um, is that. If we don't explain it completely, people make up their own ideas about what's happening. And, uh, a great example is our fire hall. People know we got a fire department, put it together, but we spent some serious money on that new building. And there's an image out there on the fence that really talks about what we're going to get for all of that effort. And, um, and so we have, we're, we're going to have three projects now that are behind a fence here in town. And people have questions and they're making up their own story about what's behind those fences. So if there's any opportunity, Sean, for some kind of imagery that could be on care, on Cave Creek Road for people to see. I mean, they know there's a million gallon tank there and I know that Bob has met with the, with the neighborhood and I know you have as well and that berm on the west side is. Great, but, um, I really like to see an image that helps people understand that meets our goal of better communication. Clearly in our strategic plan for this coming year. So that's my comment and I appreciate your sharing tonight.
Yeah. Mayor, council, to the council member's point, I also want to let the council know. The next issue of our community newsletter that goes out to every household that has a utility account is, um, this is the front page story on it and it takes the entire page. Kind of explaining it, the importance, everything that Sean did tonight is going to be in a kind of a, a shorter, probably take three minutes to read kind of version, USA Today version. But the, the point is you're absolutely right. People, um, are going to have a lot of questions about this. They already have had a lot of questions. There's been a lot of social media. Uh, comments on this. And so we're doing everything we can and will continue to do. So, um, I like your idea, um, about having some sort of an imaging or some sort of a, um, conceptual rendering. So they can see. As they drive by what is going to be coming there. So I'll work with, with Sean and staff to make sure that we do that. It's a very good point you bring.
Thanks.
I'd like to point out that this is the culmination of work that was done by the water advisory committee and the mayor played a very important part in that for. How many years now? Five years that we've been working.
Eleven.
This is a eleven year project. So it's, it, it's been quite a project. And also I give credit to the past town manager in working with the city of Phoenix. Cave Creek is just. This little thing up, this little blob up at there on the top of the map, Venus, Phoenix is, is the behemoth. And this benefits Phoenix because they get to move their water up through their system that would otherwise possibly be substandard because it had sat there too long. So that gives us the water and it gives them the opportunity to move the water. So it's a very important cooperative effort between the two towns. And I think it benefits the two towns. Thanks for eleven years of work, Mayor Morris.
Uh, Ernie Bunch, would you like to say something or ask a question? I guess we're in the question phase.
No, I'm, I'm good. I, you know, it, it, having been familiar with this for so long, I don't really have anything that I don't, uh, don't understand.
I have a couple of questions. Um, I, I, I think it's, um. You know, a, a critical situation. Um, with a water loss really understates the jeopardy the town is in. If we lose water for two days, we're going to abandon ship. Uh, this is, you're going to have serious health problems. The hospital won't run, Walmart won't run. Uh, you won't have water to water your plants to drink. Um, I, I just don't think you can understate the jeopardy the town is in from a water loss. And the second is. The risk of that happening is extraordinarily high. We have a, a pipeline that's thirty-five, forty years old, thirty-five, forty year old pumps. We have valves that don't work that can't be worked on because you can't take them out of service because the town would lose water supply within a very short time. So when they go to work on these underground. Um, uh, pipe, uh, pumps, they're twelve, uh, there are twelve pumps, three, uh, nine of them are underground on the line down there that you don't even see. And people have to go down there and fix them, uh, when they break and they break, uh, equipment breaks. So I, I, the, the risk is extraordinary and the most, um, to that mechanical risk. We also have the risk of the power systems. When you're looking at risk, it's always the power system that is the highest risk. And we have that. A car hits the motor control center in front of Lowe's. Guess what? We're out of water. For days, maybe weeks. And Sean's looking at me like I'm underestimating the time.
At some spare parts.
I, I just want everybody in town to realize that this is a lot of money and you always look at both the risk. And the reward. If you don't spend the money, what's your idea? That, that is what people need to think. If we don't spend the money on this, how are you going to keep this town alive and in water? Because something is going to happen. It is inevitable. Um, and I, I thank, uh, Councilman, uh, Elkema for his, that we really need to explain these things to people. I think, also I think, uh, would you, would you please mention the help we had with the two million dollar, uh, congressional discretionary fund? We had a lot of help from our. Uh, through political activities and s- this, this was a staff driven operation that got us two million bucks. So.
Yeah. Yes, uh, Mayor Council, uh, we actually, uh, ended up getting letters of support from city of Phoenix. City Phoenix mayor supported that. Uh, again, we've been, we made this application almost two years ago. And Shirley, uh, Fox, I give her credit. She sees all the, she got shot the grant and, and, and we, we went it through. We actually went through both senate offices and congressional offices. And we've been following it through. So it's, uh, currently now with, um, um. Oh, actually my, my brain's going down to, I think it's a senator who's actually moving it forward. But, uh, yeah, it's, it's been a great effort. We've actually had support, uh, from, uh, again, from Phoenix and just other jurisdictions. Yeah, Central Arizona Project, I'm sorry. So, yeah.
Ob- obviously we have a quite an, an important partnership with them. Yeah. So they were very generous in writing the letter.
Yeah. Senator Kelly's office was trying to get out, but, yeah, we had support all the way through the, the, uh, the, uh, state's congressional, uh, but they, only one person gets, one group gets to move it forward is our understanding the process. So. Um, yeah, it's, it's great. And it's the largest, uh, award this year as of direct congressional funding to the state is actually going to this project. So that we're very proud of that. And you know, it, it does put some other restrictions, but partly because we're getting the WIFA funding, we have to do things like, um, meet some, um, requirements for Buy American Steel and Davis Bacon labor requirements, but that was already on the project to begin with. And that was already built into the cost. Uh, but yeah, it's a great thing that we've got this. Again, we're, I, I look at it from the standpoint that we're leveraging this in, in total, the town's spending twenty-one million dollars, but Phoenix is, is also spending over twenty million dollars. So this is a forty million dollar project to secure the town's water supply. The town, you know, uh, again, we're getting a loan for a, but a large portion of it. We've got, uh, five million dollars in grants, a thirteen million dollar loan, which is we're only paying twelve million dollars for the loan. We're getting a million dollars in, in forgivable interest principal. And then we do have a, already a, a, a utility fund that was set aside for large projects like this. So all, every, all the mechanisms were put in place and I won't take credit for that. A lot of that was put in place by other people working very hard on this project and a lot of effort by few, our past councils and even this council to get this to conclusion. So. Yeah, I, I, I can't underestimate, you know, just how significant this will be for the town. You know, the, the last time the town undertook a project this significant was, uh, in two thousand and seven, when the. when the town bought the water system and immediately turned around and invested sixteen million dollars in the next eighteen months to actually rebuild the system back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. This is sort of the next phase of that improvement for the town's water system. And that last improvement, you know, would have cost us probably two or three times that amount. If we tried to do that work, that was when the water treatment plant was expanded, the Newry site was built, and the Rockaway site were all built in that that project. And that was to to help secure the water system that we bought, which wasn't in good shape when we bought it. The town has invested a lot of money in this system, but we need to continue to do large projects like the one that we have in front of us, which will be the next step to help the reliability of the overall water system. So we can make sure that people, when they turn their faucets, that they can rely on that water supply.
Uh, my next question is, if you'd go back to the pie chart, please, and uh continuing on council member Elkema's trend, what does this mean for the people in town? I'd like to go through each of those sources of revenue. And you you can check my understanding, but the the water fund down there, that four point nine million dollars, that comes through sales taxes. So that is collected and goes in there, and it has been for, what, fifteen years, and it's been building up? Uh, we've got forgivable stuff from WIFA, we have the SLRF grant, and we have the congressional man grant. Those are all monies that are coming from outside the town that no one in town is going to have to pay for. And finally, the twelve point one eight million in the WIFA loan down there, that is going to come through the rates. Correct. And not only that, but it's already in the rates. There, this does not, we've already pre-planned so that the funding for this is already built into the bank. So the net effect going forward for the people in town is zero. I think that that is something we always have to keep in mind is what is the effect on our uh on our residents in town? And uh, we've already got this built into the books, that the amount of planning that has gone to this over all these years is immense. It's touched most everything in town. So uh, that's my last question. What else wants to back in? Um, we have public comment on this.
David Phelps?
David Phelps here, a Cave Creek resident. The Water Fund Thirty is a theft from preservation funding, Bob. I know you weren't here when it changed, but the spur cross funding mechanism that was set up to do the state trust land annexation purchases has been hijacked by our utility companies for a good cause, for a good reason, but don't think it's free. The way we're paying for this is because we're not holding our word to the ratepayers who were told umpteen years ago, we need to buy this water and sewer, make the sewer improvements so that we can buy the state trust land and provide water and sewer to the state trust department. Yeah, that's what we were told. Where's the movement on that purchase? And where's the money to make the down payment on that purchase? Um, I was not part of the council when the purchase of the water company was made, nor I was around for the over a decade while the water, the water accounts and the sewer companies were co-mingled together. The people on your right and the people, person on your left were there. They allowed the co-mingling and the screw-up of the books to go on for more than a decade because they didn't want to tell somebody, we need to understand where the losses are coming from. My question is something you tried to address, and that is if today four points of failure, every single one of those pump stations went out, we can't get those parts for weeks, how long are we sitting here before we get the water back on? It's a real question because we've got years before this holy grail comes along, the Caesar's Palace of the backup system is what I'm kind of calling it. Because I think we have a water interconnect with K uh Carefree that we can provide water to them, but we are not allowed to get water back into our system. And I think there are other places that we could tie into the Carefree system in a pinch, a lot cheaper, tens of millions cheaper than this plan. So, yeah, I'm still against it. And I really came off the rails from being for it because I actually was for this thing in two thousand and nineteen when we were around five, six million bucks. But at this price, this is saying common sense to the wind, we'll pay whatever we need to pay, we'll engineer a rationale for it, we'll even get people from other parts of our country to help pay for it. I just wonder how that conversation went with Senator Kelly's office when you told them, yeah, we're all tied in with Carefree, but we decided to disconnect ourselves from them because we didn't want, we didn't want to do business with them. Did you disclose that to the senator's office?
David, you don't have to address your questions to the chair, please.
I'm sorry. Did you disclose that to the senator's office? Because I think it's important for them to realize that while you're handing us two million dollars, we disconnected ourselves from our backup water supply.
We're not going to have a debate tonight, David.
No, I know.
But Carefree does not have the water. Carefree does not have a treating system. They buy their water from Scottsdale. We bought all the water that was available from Phoenix initially. So your your item is infeasible, and we can't predict what fails on that line, Bob. It's so, it's not a discussion. I'm just answering your question. Your time is up, so we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you for my time to speak.
Ron Sova?
Ron Sova, Cave Creek resident. I just have one question that I know will not be answered tonight, but perhaps the council, the mayor, vice mayor can think about it. And perhaps it's, mayor has already addressed part of it. But my question is, we had our approximately sixty million dollars worth of bonds going back fifteen years ago for the sewer and water, many WIFAL loans. Uh, those are be paid off, I believe, in about four and a half years. So, but we're gonna have a new WIFAL loan of approximately twelve million dollars. And as uh Sean pointed out, the total cost will be about nineteen million over the life of this. So my question is, uh, well, I gotta add one more point that I know that we approved water rate increases over a period of several more years. It was done about a year, year and a half ago. And uh, the first of that just went into effect about a month ago. It was very minimal as far as I'm concerned, but will there be any increases, decreases into a person's water bill, given the fact of i- in roughly five years, given the fact that the sixty million dollars worth of bonds will be all paid off? But we will have obviously at least twelve million of new bonds put in there. So is it, is that, was that built into your calculation into the rate structure from years ago? Or could there be an additional increases to cover this cost uh years down the road?
Yes, it's built into the rates.
Altogether, all total?
Yeah, it it's built into the rates, but the rates are looked at every couple of years. So so a- as inflation goes up, there are other things that can cause increases. But if we ask the ratepayers to pay the full cost of this right now, which would, I mean, not borrow the money, you'd pay it all at once. That would probably, that would add a lot of money. You'd be paying twelve million dollars off in one year. Doing it this way, we pay less than seven, about seven hundred thousand dollars off in one year. Um, so uh, we're saving the current ratepayers by stretching it over the twenty-year bond life. And um, we're also making sure that future customers pay their share because right, sitting here right today, none of us in this room is gonna benefit from this until two years from now. So the people from two years on will be paying for this because it's fair to have them do that. They're getting the advantages of, we won't have the advantage, as Mr. Phil's pointed out, Phil's pointed out, for the next two years. So there's an element of fairness, and there's element of keeping the cost down. Uh, five years out, yeah, we'll have some, some bonds will be paid down, and the future councils can make those decisions.
I didn't expect an answer, but I thank you for it. And as I grow older, my recollection, recollection of past events gets foggier. So that's why I bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, so we are um ready for motion.
I'll do it.
I can do it, Mayor, if somebody else didn't.
Go ahead, Ernie.
Yep, uh, motion to approve the award of the guaranteed maximum price number two to the construction manager at risk contract with MGC Contractors Incorporated. For the majority of the work associated with completing the new water and connect with Phoenix for an amount up to sixteen million, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and four dollars.
Okay, Ernie, you have the motion, so it's your comment first.
Yeah, I haven't been there when we, when we bought this thing and we, and knowing that the single point of of failure is that twelve and a half mile line in the four pump stations. Uh, you know, we had looked at uh in the budget, look at, look at redoing those four pump stations years ago. But then this, this alternative came forward, which is a much better solution. Uh, because anytime that you, that you lose uh, lose one of those stations or something happens, um, this is, this is just a a cleaner way to make sure that people have water when they turn their taps on. And the one thing, one option, but one thing I will, I will ask is, is I hope that Jim Ford doesn't see this number as a challenge.
I I think Ernie said it very well. I think uh that this is a, this is a security issue. We have been highly vulnerable. We we knew that, and we thank everyone uh from staff and council members, the members of the Water Advisory Committee for bringing us forward to the point that we could protect the security of our community. Thank you.
So having gone through the executive session and and all the other things related to this, the way that I view this is we made an intergovernmental agreement two years ago with Phoenix. And unfortunately, fortunately, however you want to look at it, this is a solution that came up. There is no choice here at this point.
Comments?
I I just want to also give accolades to Sean for having an open house for our public to attend and learn more about this project. And I'd like to encourage you to do that periodically as we progress on this project um because it's important for people to understand the facts. There is a lot of misinformation, disinformation perhaps out there about if we're obligated to Phoenix because of this new relationship, um, questions to that effect. And I think people deserve accurate answers. And just encourage you to have open communication and dialogue as much as possible over the next couple of years.
Well, obviously, in my comments, obviously, I favor this highly. Been working on this for for ten years. Um, it's taken a tremendous amount of different pieces to come together, everything from the Phoenix negotiations to they're constructing twenty million dollars worth of facilities down south. Uh, we had uh severe cost accounting problems that uh inhibited our ability to even set rates in this town. That took us five years to set our first set of rates. Um, we had the tremendous success of getting a number of grants, and staff deserves all the credit there for working with the congressional and senate delegations to get that done. Um, and finally, uh, the effect on the rate payer from this point forward should be almost nil. It's it's baked into the rates, the rates have been planned for years. Everything around this is the culmination of many, many things coming together at this point. And I I use the the phrase abandon ship. I think people ought to think about what the alternative, if there are no other reasonable alternatives to this project. I'm gonna state that finally. Um, I have thirty-five years in engineering, reliability, uh, finance and other things, and I've been working on this. I I highly support it. I think it's gonna uh pay off in the future. May not see it because someone will open a valve somewhere and we won't lose water or we'll have a relatively minor outage rather than a, hey, the water's off, find a hotel to stay in somewhere in the valley. Um, so I'm obviously gonna vote for this. With that, this is a roll call.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Member Elkema?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Royer?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye, motion passes seven zero. Sean, you're on the way. Um, motion adjourned.
So I'll move.
Second.
Any adjourned?